Good evening, everyone. It's good to see you. Thank you for coming out. We are moving forward and we're getting in the home stretch of our comprehensive plan, and tonight is the public hearing for that. And I have, we have some council members who have, who are here as well this evening. Councilwoman Vicky Presser, Councilman, Council President Justin Brash, Councilman Richard Payne. But this is not, tonight is not about the council. It's not about the mayor. It's about our committee that has worked so hard on this project. We've had, made so many opportunities for people to comment and get involved available. And all I get when I talk to my members of the Steering Committee here is how happy they are to work with each other and how happy they are to help work on the future of White Plains. So, everyone here, you'll be heard tonight. And after this is completed and we have the final document, it will be submitted to the council, council reviews it, public hearing then, and then the final document is passed and we have a comprehensive plan. So, I really came here to thank all of you on the Steering Committee for your commitment of time and dedication to our city.[71.11][71.11](APPLAUSE). And I also thank all of you who came to speak tonight and everyone who may be watching at home who has contributed along the way. It's wonderful to be, to live in a community where people care this much about the community. It's fantastic to be the mayor of that kind of community. So, thank you all and have a good evening.[92.11][92.11](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Chris Gomez, Planning Commissioner here with the city. I recognize most, if not everybody, in this audience. And I too want to echo the mayor's sentiments, having the pleasure of working with this wonderful comprehensive plan committee for the better part of a year now. I can say everybody here has been more than involved and has really met and exceeded expectations. So, as the mayor said, again, this hearing tonight is on this comprehensive plan draft that the comprehensive plan committee, with the help of our consultants, who I'll introduce in a moment, and city staff, the planning department, among other departments in the city, have helped compile. Before I start, I'm going to have a brief presentation, go through kind of a little what's in the plan, but then really turn it over to talk about tonight, the public meeting, public hearing, and we'll call you up for comments. What's important, I do want to say, is this is the community's plan, right? This was something that, for the better part of two and a half years, I'd say now, I first presented to the common council almost two and a half years ago, from this lectern, starting and kicking off this process, and I'm more than pleased at the progress we've made thus far. So, here we go. One White Plains, an updated vision for our city. Here we are, obviously, at the comprehensive plan committee public hearing. We'll try to keep it brief, 15 to 20 minutes in this presentation, then we're going to turn it over to folks that have signed in for public comment, and then beyond that, the microphone will be to anybody who has yet to sign in. Just kind of an introduction, BFJ Planning, our consultants, both Sarah and Mark, who you're all very familiar with throughout this process, are here this evening, and of course, our wonderful comprehensive plan committee. I think I just want to go around really quickly. We have Vanelle Yehadi, Erwin Ong, Mr. Mike Divney, Michael Dalton, Reina Catville, we have Mr. Ken Cleary, Aaron O'Keefe, and of course, Linda Popolo, who many of you all know. Everybody here represents different areas of the city and has a whole bunch of, a wealth of knowledge, I would say, as it relates to this planning process. So, this was really the mandate. When the comprehensive plan committee was appointed by the common council, it was really to steer the process, almost like a steering committee, right? Reviewed and commented on all the content that was being developed after each of these public hearings, public meetings, where we got information, wealth of information and comments. Importantly, each of these committee members took the initiative to be a chapter champion. The chapters of the plan or the elements are kind of strewn across the room here. There's six key elements we'll get into in a moment. And so, these chapter champions really kind of took an interest and really did a deep dive in each of those areas to help lead discussions. By the way, all of the comprehensive plan committee meetings are still available at the onewhiteplains.com website, so if you missed any, you can go back and kind of watch this discussion. Obviously, we had a lot of events, not just the meetings here, but there was farmers' markets, there were going to the schools, we did a wealth of listening tour events, all those things. We had committee members that were representing both the committee and frankly, the city in this process. And then ultimately, the mandate here was to prepare a draft plan for review by the common council and ultimate adoption. So, that's where we are this evening. We have that draft that's been posted for the better part of a month on the website for all the review. A really quick primer, everybody throughout this process, I'm sure, is aware, but what is a comprehensive plan? It's really an official, long-range planning document, and it's about providing policy guidance for the growth of the city. But it's not just about particular land use projects, it's about infrastructure, it's about social capital, and it's about city services. Our last plan, by way of reference, was adopted in 1997 with an update in 2006 and a minor update in 2012. So, we were overdue, and I'm excited to, you know, announce tonight what an aspirational, educational, concise, and dynamic document I believe One White Plains to be. Importantly, a lot of the content that is in this draft plan is also going to be rolled out in the coming months in a very web-friendly manner. So, a lot of the information in this kind of document, you can print, but the goal was for this to be a long, kind of dynamic process and document that would live on and not collect dust on a shelf. I've gone over this, but I have to say it every time I speak about the comprehensive plan. Why do we do this? Why is this important? And I need to hammer this home once again. It's really about codifying a community vision, and it's about this, you know, we always have this push-pull when I go to community meetings about shaping the future of the city of White Plains versus protecting, whatever that might mean to whoever, you know, whoever's reviewing projects. What does the community in the future want to be? And then I really step back and try to define who is the community, right? It's obviously everybody that sleeps here, the 60,000 folks that call White Plains home, but it's also about the people that come here every day to work, shop, play, recreate, et cetera. We have to acknowledge a change is inevitable, right? So, this process has always been, we started this process, frankly, unlike a lot of comprehensive plans, acknowledging that upfront, and we knew we cannot plan in a vacuum, right? We have neighbors. We're 10 square miles, but we do have neighbors that impact White Plains and vice versa. And I put this last bullet in red, and I hit this every time I talk about comprehensive planning, is this notion of equity. There's certainly a long legacy of planning documents in the country, in our local communities, such as White Plains, and the effect and the implementation of such plans have really shaped the city we live in today, for better or worse, right? So, these documents are important. They talk about issues of housing, job access, density, where and how the city's going to grow. We clearly have a long history in White Plains dating back to 1928, which is the first comprehensive plan, when that was first adopted. There is a major update in 1962, a new plan, significant urban renewal work done in, as everybody knows, in the 70s and 80s. You can see the upper right slide right there that was from, gosh, I don't know, we have Mike Divney involved in that project, you can see. Sorry, Mike. But that was back in the 80s, I think. And then we went into, you know, into the 90s, into the 96 plan, and obviously, what we have on the books now, which was last updated in 2012. Importantly, the comprehensive plan is not the only planning document the city produces or works on. This is an example of a consolidated plan through the Federal Community Development Block Grant Funding Program from HUD. So, the planning department does that on a five-year basis and even annually. Many of you are familiar with the recent Transit District, recent, it was four years ago, five years ago now, the White Plains Transit District Strategic Plan. And so, there's always planning going on, but this is our kind of overarching document, the comprehensive plan. And here we are tonight, again, for the first hearing on the draft, comprehensive plan committee's version of One White Plains. So, what's in the name? Why One White Plains? I have the good fortune, like many of the council members and community members and the mayor, to speak at a lot of the neighborhood associations, and what you realize, and what I've realized in my eight years with the city, is that we have a very diverse group of neighborhood associations, many of them, all of them frankly, are very involved. But when we started this process and thinking of the name for this plan, the thought was, what if we broke down some of those boundaries? What if we started thinking a little differently than perhaps the plan was organized in 1997? And took those 28 neighborhoods and respected them, and obviously, every community has a different need or every neighborhood, but then really thought as one city. And then our great seal, I like to cite as well, e pluribus unum, out of many, one, really that we're stronger together, and that really was the driving force behind this One White Plains moniker. So, the plan itself, the draft that's on the current city's website, the onewhiteplains.com website, includes an introduction, which kind of gives an overview and talks about the comprehensive planning process, this last two and a half years. The meat of the plan, really the quote-unquote "chapters" or "elements," are these six themes that were developed when we started this process. You see the wonderful boards, many of you probably recognize from the public hearings, the different topical areas. So, we have Play White Plains, which deals with recreation, and sort of cultural programming and history and heritage. We have Work White Plains, that talks about the economy, economic development, opportunities to reinforce the city here in White Plains as a regional economic hub. We have Connect White Plains, which talks about transit, walkability, connectivity, parking, traffic, all that kind of good stuff. Live White Plains, which has gotten a lot of interest, the purple "live" there, the Professor Plum, if you will, which has all sorts of information on land use, zoning, what should the future of the city be in terms of focusing developments and really looking at equity issues and community issues. Green White Plains was a mandate from the mayor in this process, was to make sure we developed a comprehensive plan that really was pushing the envelope when it looks at issues of sustainability and planning for the future, climate resilience and the like. And then Strengthen White Plains, on the bottom right there, which talks about how the city allocates public resources to really support a lot of these planning initiatives that we've come up with. The element structure, that top of the slide there, talks about each of these six elements. We purposefully, there's no hierarchy here, right? They're all important and they all sort of interconnect, but each structure, each element itself rather, has an introduction, which you've obviously read, and it gets into topics and objectives we've identified, existing conditions, and then it ends with very specific initiatives. There's 145 of them across the plan, roughly 25 or so in each element, and those are what you see around you and what we've had a lot of public comments on over the coming, past year, I would say. And importantly, we didn't want to leave a plan without a very strong implementation arm, so we have Implement WP, White Plains, which talks about how we implement a lot of these initiatives. Importantly, there's a lot of baseline data, so the appendix of the plan, which you can, you know, download as well, has a very in-depth analysis of recent demographic land use trends and zoning, and we did have an independent consultant that looked at retail study for downtown White Plains and independent nodes. So, that is the Street Sense Economic Development Diagnostic and Findings, which is an actual fascinating read. So, we started this, as I said, two and a half years ago, with a significant outreach. We actually started with a listening tour, so unlike most comprehensive planning processes, the idea was to go out and just listen. There was no commenting, there was not coming to meetings with preconceived ideas of how this plan should grow. It was an organic process. We had about 12 onsite listening tour dates, you'll see on the right there, with all sorts of, you know, timing to make sure we accommodated different folks, different locations all over the city. And of course, in the midst of COVID, we did several Zoom meetings as well. So, we get a hecka lot of comments, it was very productive. We did have a vision survey, it really led to what you see in the front of the room, which is ultimately the One White Plains Vision Statement that really was the guiding principle of this document. And you can see on the bottom left what was the most common response in terms of the three words for the vision of White Plains. One was affordable, we had a lot of talk about diversity and community, and of course, housing was one of the major items we kept hearing about, we still hear about, is the challenge of providing adequate housing. Many of you had attended the November 18, 2021 workshop over at the Performing Arts Center and the City Center, and this was wonderful as well. A lot of the boards, where we were just kind of identifying the six elements and what the structure would be, we got wonderful feedback. So, that was attended by a great number of people, and that culminated in what you see here, the One White Plains Vision Plan. So, we are One White Plains, a welcoming, safe, inclusive community with housing, employment, education, transportation, and recreational opportunities to fulfill the needs of our diverse population, a city where business, culture, and the arts thrive, where the natural environment is valued, and where public spaces are accessible, where we acknowledge our history and address regional, social, and economic trends to plan for an equitable and sustainable future. So, that was after a full year of going out and listening and getting comments, the driving principle and vision statement for the plan. We followed up all of that work with a very successful workshop on June 15, 2022, at the Jaguar Room at the NIPA Building, and that was where we had the roundtables, we had subject matter experts, many of you in these photos are in the room as well, and we actually worked up maps to get some more detail. We received over 200 comments on our interactive mapping feature, which is still available, I want to plug at onewhiteplains.com. Had another meeting, June 12, 2023, almost a year to the date, very well attended, over 150 folks at the White Plains Public Library. The boards around this room are the actual boards we had there, where people are identifying and commenting, so to speak, on each of these draft initiatives for the future, based on, you know, giving a gold star if it was something important, down to red, we don't like it, or green, it's a go. So, we have all of those in the back of the room. Just recently, conducted a second public outreach program exclusive in Spanish. This was at El Centro Hispano, and we got a great turnout there as well. You see the Spanish boards are in the room and have been posted online. So, I'm going to turn it over to Sarah from BFJ, to kind of take us in the last few minutes into the public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Gomez. Good evening. My name is Sarah Jaikle, Principal of BFJ Planning. I think Chris did go through the six elements of the plan, but just to reiterate, you know, they're green, connect, play, strengthen, live, and work. And for those that haven't had a chance, I do recommend, perhaps at the end of the meeting, walking around, taking a look at the boards, but also spending some time with the content at onewhiteplains.com. Chris talked about the structure, so I think we can go on to the next slide. So, following each of those six element chapters, which have all of the recommendations, there's this very important piece of the plan that is critical, and Chris said it, when, this isn't a plan that we want just to sit on a shelf, this is a plan that needs, I'm going to say it again, a plan for implementation, and that is the third chapter, the third element of the plan, and actually, the phase that will continue after adoption. And so, the plan really culminates after the six element chapters with this implementation chapter, which has a matrix for each of the elements, and really goes through each initiative and identifies where there are overlapping initiatives between various elements. So, there may be things in green that also affect play, or that are in green that might have to do with connect, and so making sure that those connections are clear in the plan. But then also, and very importantly, identifying the implementation lead. So, which city agency will be taking the lead? Is it the planning department, the recreation department, you know, planning, the common council, the planning board, et cetera? And so, that really is giving the city a roadmap for moving forward with initiatives. There's also importantly, a timeframe category, which looks at initiatives, sets a timeframe for whether it's a short term, so the next five years, to start and complete that task, or a medium term, which is five to 10, and then longer term, which is 10-plus years. And some of the factors that go into identifying those timeframes are, you know, feasibility, is there a feasibility study that can start now, but it may still take five to 10 years to actually get towards construction of a project? There may be funding issues or budgetary constraints, and so those things went into identifying those timeframes. But this is a really critical piece. This goes through all 145 initiatives and really, you know, identifies who will be taking the lead, and will help the city, the city council, the city staff identify sort of priorities for implementation moving forward. And again, this will also provide a very nice roadmap for identifying when things have been completed. So, it's an easy way to track, this will live online, and as things are completed, can, you know, update the website and show where various statuses for each initiative. It also has what we're calling a land use approach summary. This is a visual depiction of many of the land use, transportation, some of the recreation, open space initiatives that are in the plan. So, the ones that are a little bit more land use-based are shown in the map. And so, you know, this is just another way of sort of visualizing what some of those recommendations are. And importantly, as Chris said, and I couldn't believe it until I saw the slide that said that first workshop was in November 2021, really has been two and a half years that we've been working on this. And as you can see, all the way over on your screen to the right under 2023, there is a little arrow pointing into 2024. And so, tonight, we are, you know, importantly, having the comprehensive plan committee public hearing, that is a requirement of state law. The committee has to have its own public hearing to hear from the public, to get feedback before it ultimately sends a more final draft plan to the city council for consideration. So, this is really the beginning, a step in the more public review process of the comprehensive plan. We've worked over the last two and a half years drafting that plan so closely with the committee, and I just want to again, thank the committee for their hard work. They have been an absolutely fantastic group to work with, have taken so much ownership over the various elements, and have provided us with just incredible feedback, so I thank you for that. And so, after tonight, really the next steps will be, we will hear everything that is said, we will review that with staff, with the committee, and ultimately be making a set of revisions to the plan that will then ultimately get sent to city council, hopefully in December for their review. We will then be kicking off what's called the State Environmental Quality Review Act process, and hopefully, moving into 2024 with public hearings of the city council, with hopefully, an ultimate adoption sometime in, in spring of next year. So, again, very important, you can scan this, if you have your camera out, feel free, but we'll just plug it again, onewhiteplains.com, you can download all of the content from the plan. All of the chapters are up there, the introduction chapter, the six elements, and the implementation, as well as the appendices, the various reports. One other thing to note is that each individual chapter also has a companion appendix, so there are additional existing conditions for each element chapter. We didn't want to sort of bog down the text of the document with an encyclopedia of existing conditions, but we did need to know all of those things, and so they are available for review, as well as all of the committee meetings, meeting records from all of the public workshops, and a whole host of other information. So, we really do encourage that you spend a little time there. So, again, next steps, public comments will be received this evening, obviously, and by email and written, or by regular mail through November 7, so that's 15 days following tonight's meeting. There will be a common council briefing on the 30th, so next, I believe that's next Monday. The final plan, as I said, will be sent to the common council, hopefully in December, with common council hearings anticipated in early 2024, and environmental review will be taking place along that same timeline. And so, for tonight's public hearing, the meeting really is going to be run like a traditional public hearing, it's for, public hearing for statements and comments. We're asking that you all keep your comments to under three minutes, so that everyone has an opportunity to speak. And the purpose is really to hear from the public. We're not going to get into a discussion or a back and forth. We do also have written comment cards, if you're more comfortable writing your comments down, you can leave those with us. You could also, you know, if you listened tonight, go back, spend a little time with the online content, and then send in additional comments. If you wish to speak, there is a signup sheet at the front, you know, you can sign up at any time during the meeting. And then again, if you want to submit comments by email, it is onewp@whiteplainsny.gov. We do encourage you to do that, and you can, you know, submit comments on any, any of the elements and various components of the plan. And with that, I'm going to turn it to Mark Frecker from BFJ, who will be reading out the names and, oh, I guess the last thing to say is that if you're going to speak, you need to just come to this front table and speak from the mic. We were told that you do not need to bend over, they will pick you up if you're standing.
And after this first sheet, if you don't please come up and sign, otherwise, we have a worksheet here for signup. Yeah, and also, we do have translation available, turning on here is the speech, so we submit comments. So, again, comments will be, we're asking both to keep comments to a three minute maximum, and give the time when we're at three minutes, hope that everybody's quiet down after three minutes.
For our first individual, it can step up, John, John Rabbits, please, please step up. And again, just, oh, center?
Yeah, he stands, he stands right here. This, this will, okay. Good evening, everyone, I'm John Rabbits, I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for the Business.
You want to speak, sorry, you want to speak to the committee?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry to my back. I'm John, thank you, members of the committee. I see some familiar faces here as well. I'm John Rabbits, I'm the Executive Vice President and Chief Operating Officer for the Business Council of Westchester. We are the county's largest business membership organization that focuses on economic development and advocacy. We want to first congratulate Commissioner Gomez, his team, this committee, the mayor, for doing what I wish other municipalities would do, which is to start the process the right way, which is what tonight is, and that's why we wanted to be here for this first meeting. You're seeing, you've seen the plan, you've seen the transparency, you've seen the work that's already been done. This is a win-win for White Plains, it's a win-win for Westchester County, and it's a win-win for New York State. We are looking to always recruit and retain businesses to come to Westchester County. We want people to be able to work, to live, and to play in Westchester County, and you'll see, if you read the sections of this plan, this plan touches all those, checks all those boxes, if you will. But also, I think is so important, and one that we take so seriously, is that the leaders of each of these initiatives have proven track records. They've made a commitment to Westchester County, they've made a commitment to White Plains, they've made a commitment to be good, responsible corporate neighbors, they're going to listen, they're going to adjust, they're going to tweak, but most importantly, they're going to keep an open mind, so that these projects are done with input from the community and from the business community as well. So, again, we wanted to be here tonight to kick this off, we will be participating in every step of the process that you've mentioned today, to make sure that the city of White Plains knows that the business community of Westchester County is behind this project. There are so many exciting things that you're going to hear about in this plan of these six initiatives. And again, I wish more municipalities around the state and around the country could look at this and see it, use it as a role model for themselves as they move forward. So, thank you again for your commitment, thank you for Commissioner Gomez, for all the work that you and your team have done, and we look forward to many successful openings of great events in this project. Thank you.
Great, thank you.[1554.33][1554.33](APPLAUSE). All right, so the next individual, Utscha Powell.
Hi, I'm, I'm Utscha, freshman this year of White Plains High School, and I'm a brand new member of the Youth Bureau of White Plains School, and I'm really glad to join everyone here today. It's such a pleasure to work with everyone, and I would like to say to make some changes for youth and to complete the demands of youth. I think youth needs a safe personal space. So, yeah, so I want to make some changes, not changes, like I want to have some change for the youth. I want, I would like to have some safe space for the youth to hang out or to feel comfortable, because every, all the places are not for us. So, I think today's youth needs to be comfortable and they need to be, you know, they need to be like, feel free to share them, their thoughts and everything. So, as, as a member of Youth Bureau, I think we, we, it would be better if we had our own space, to have our own building where we can create and complete people's need, such as like, to have some pools, to, to just have some safe space where people can talk to each other, they can be comfortable with people, and they can hang out anytime, whenever they want. They can, they can also ask for help for anything they want, and I think everyone should be, should feel free to everyone, because now, because I think we all need space, we all need personal space also. So, I would, I would look forward for this project to work, and I hope everyone will be able, able to help us and the youth, and it was such a pleasure to meet you, and I hope we can work further and we can see a great future. So, thank you for listening, and thanks to listening to youth and working with us. Thank you.[1724.23][1724.23](APPLAUSE).
Thank you, Utscha, thanks for being here this, this evening. The next individual, Dr. Eisenberg.
Good evening, I'm Jim Eisenberg, I'm the co-founder of Grandpas United here in White Plains. We've been here five years, I've lived here 40 years. My colleague Frank Williams at the Youth Bureau is the other co-founder. We have more than a hundred or more grandpas in the city who have been involved, and we're here tonight because we want to be supportive of our young colleagues and the youth in our community, and we're very interested in working with you, with all the fine work you've done, and with your colleagues and the staff. I know Judy for many years. We would like to host a community meeting of young people and others involved with the youth community to identify and work on specific priorities. the youth community to identify and work on specific priorities that really impact youth in our community. I appreciate all of the comments that were made before me, but the other word that I don't see on all of the important words that were listed, diversity and housing, I don't see the word intergenerational. And intergenerational, I've discovered from being an old guy in grandpas, is a major word that is now surfacing across this country because it's missing. How generations can come together and live together, and certainly in our community, we have a vast range of people of different ages, experience, cultures, and I think one of the important models White Plains may offer is a model of an intergenerational community around all the issues you've identified, be it housing, be it recreation, be it businesses, be it healthcare. One of the issues we're starting, Dr. Vito Sessa, who would have been here tonight and will participate, is a jumpstart for dads, where grandpas are going to be working with White Plains Hospital and other providers on supporting new fathers and supporting young people in their development. And we're looking at a whole range, one of the things I'm hoping is we can have some dinners here in the community that are intergenerational, to look at all of the people of different ages, younger people, who will be, and obviously, we welcome living here. So, I hope that Grandpas United can be a part of this process. We want to support an intergenerational community as a model for what White Plains could be now and into the future. We're very, very interested in the youth community, we're interested in what's going to be happening post-galleria, and would like to be involved. We have a very diverse group of grandpas, we're very involved in a good way with the schools, I've talked to Dr. Rika about being involved, he's been tremendously supportive, so I want to thank you, and hopefully, we can be welcomed to be a part of all of the planning and all of the great work you're doing, and I want to thank our council members, certainly both Vicki and Justin Rash have been outstanding, and God knows, we all know Nick Wolf, and he's one of the grandpas, I thought he might come in as, you know, a costume tonight or something, but if you're available on October 30th, we're having a grandpa outdoor event at Liberty Park, and it'll be a costume event only. So, thank you all for your great support, and I want to leave you with the word intergenerational, we want to be a part of that, and we want to be a part of developing all of the good work for the youth community and other generations in our city. Thank you.
Okay, next we have Joseph Flores.
Good evening, my name is Joseph, I'm a senior at White Plains High School, and I'm part of the Youth Bureau's Mayor's Youth Council, and I'm here to speak on the situation of youth again, as my colleague mentioned. I worked over a project over the summer for Afterglow, and it was a safe space for teens, we proposed it to the city, and as we continue searching for new space, the gallery has closed, obviously, and there's no space for teens, and as much as the Youth Bureau tries to offer and tries to expose to youth and teenagers on its essential needs, on mental health especially, within its system, we try to find a way for teens to be open. And as I'm proposing here today, and this marvelous project you guys have, I'm hoping for a safe space for teens, obviously, I'm graduating, but I want to leave a place for students where they can feel welcome, where they don't have to feel shut out, where they can feel a need for another home, right? As they say, school is like a home for other students, and a second home for students where they feel welcoming, and that they feel not, not afraid to, like, be within, and obviously, the Youth Bureau gives so many opportunities with this amazing programs. One of the councilwomen does, when she gave me, when she sponsored some of the jobs for the job fair, and all I'm here is today to speak out, is for a safe space for teens where they feel essentially like a second home for them. And obviously, you guys have an amazing committee, and I'm hoping that this project could happen, so, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Ben Brown, please.
Thanks very much. I'm here on behalf of the local grassroots organization of neighbors, Coalition for Addition Without Subtraction Incorporated, CAWS. First, a word of thanks for longer than CAWS has even existed. Your committee has devoted significant, significant amounts of time out of your schedules toward developing the city's next comprehensive plan, all on a volunteer basis. We also appreciate the professional efforts of the city's planning department and BFJ Planning. CAWS is focused on the Galleria redevelopment, and we have grave concerns about how that process has been handled. Throughout your committee's existence, you proactively asked questions about the future of the Galleria site. At your, at your October 19, 2022 meeting, you raised those questions. At your March 15, 2023 meeting, you raised those questions. At your June 21, 2023 meeting, you graciously discussed the letter we sent you about the Galleria site. We feel that at none of these times did the city and planning department provide you very clear advice about what role you would have in the process of delineating the Galleria site's future. Meanwhile, elements of city government were working to delineate the site's future behind the scenes without telling you. We received a response to a FOIL request, and I'm happy to share it with any of you who would email me, that tends to indicate that the developer was involved in designing the legislation to allow sale of the 3.9 acres of publicly owned land without public auction, and we weren't brought along. We still don't understand what's wrong with public auction and what's wrong with sealed bids. You have to admit, at first glance, those seem, those seem like healthy safeguards. No one's explained it, and you've been asking those questions yourselves. Only in July was the live WP chapter of the plan released with very concrete recommendations about the Galleria site. Only then were you really given the opportunity to get involved. Your committee had already been existence, in existence and operating for over a year, and only at your September 28 meeting did you begin to discuss the concrete details of the plan with the planning commissioner. We feel that's unfortunate, there are a lot of issues that could still be productively explored. Our substantive feedback is this, the draft live WP chapter, which you did not write, which was written by city staff and BFJ Planning, is very specific about the future zoning of the Galleria site. It specifies a particular very dense zone, at the same time, it is very nonspecific about the public benefit to come from the site, about how much affordable housing, about what kind of space for young people, about how much green open space, about affordable retail, about the labor policy. That's not balanced. We give the developer the zoning it wants upfront, but we don't reserve the public benefit that we need upfront. There's a level of specificity in one place, but not in another. It's really unfortunate to us that you never had the opportunity to discuss that more specifically, because we really like your committee, a committee of 17 citizens, neighbors, distinguished but also approachable. There is so much money at stake in this redevelopment project that we strongly feel the need for a citizen oversight committee and oversight mechanism, and your committee can do that. Our specific recommendation is this, the committee should exercise great caution about setting the baseline for negotiations over the Galleria site's public benefit as CB4 zoning. As background, the site is currently in Zone B6, allowing a not insubstantial maximum height of 90 feet. CB4 zoning is one of the city's densest zones, allowing heights of 280 feet generally, explicitly contemplating heights of 400 feet with special permits. The idea of the density bonus structure being used solely to push density beyond the already very high CB4 zoning was never explicitly discussed by this committee. This approach seems inconsistent with the basic strategy of successful negotiation. In negotiation, the city should leverage its control over land use to maximize benefit for the citizens, young and old. We have advocated that city officials approach these negotiations as aggressive champions of the public interest. We have recommended pursuing affordable housing at the site well above the current legal minimum required by quote, quote of ordinances, Section 973, among other public benefit that we seek. Implying CB4 zoning rather than B6 zoning as the starting point for negotiations seems to give away a large part of the city's leverage upfront for no benefit. Again, I greatly appreciate the work you're doing, all the questions you've asked and the attention you've paid. I thank you so much for hearing me, and I will certainly, we're, we're working on some more detailed written comments that we'll get to by the deadline, so thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Valerie Simmons, please.
Good evening, hi. I too am a founding member of CAWS, but I'm not here to talk about that, it's my teammate did a great job, but I want to say thank you to Dr. Eisenberg, who left, for bringing up the intergenerational concern, because I worked for public housing, and there are a lot of grandmas, too, who have had to take over and bring up their grandchildren, and they don't have affordable space, they don't have, they're not really building a lot of three-bedroom apartments anymore. If you could put a push on the developer with that and make it affordable, also for the teens, thank you, very proud to see that happen. There is no place, the gallery is shut down, there's nowhere for them to go. I hope this committee takes, you know, a lot of value in what they, they said before you this evening. Lastly, I'm not going to stay long, I applaud the committee, I thank you, I just don't see enough diversity, okay? There's still communities who should be sitting on this board, and I hope whoever appoints, it's mayor, whomever, take that into consideration. We have voices, we want to be heard, so thank you.
Thank you. Next, Doris Dingott.
No, no, it was a mistake.
Oh, mistake, okay. So then we have Jennifer Fiorelli.
Hi, thank you for allowing me a moment to speak, I'm Jennifer Fiorelli with the Business Improvement District. I'll be brief, we've been very pleased to see the amount of civic engagement that's gone into this whole comprehensive planning process. I would like to take a moment again to applaud all of you, the staff and the volunteers who have put so much time and deep thought into this, and diligence to ensure that there were a lot of opportunities for individuals to come up and speak in a variety of ways. The bid was, very pleased to participate as one of the many stakeholders in that process, and I want you to know that we remain committed in helping to further the process as we go along, whether that's disseminating information or continuing to feed back the, you know, ground feedback that we get as well. Some of the many items that we are excited about include creation, that were discussed in the plan, include creation of a city economic development and business support officer that can partner with our bid and the county government to make a three-legged stool of support for our local business community, increased open space downtown. Downtown's are truly known for being third spaces, as we know, our businesses, notably coffee shops, but also restaurants, but also public events and natural gathering spots, be it plazas or pocket parks or open air markets or publicly accessible open space. So we're thrilled that this committee recognizes the need to nurture those spaces. We're excited to see that this plan makes note of the cluster of very strong cultural anchors that we have in our downtown already, I saw some of our cultural partners here, and whether it's bricks and mortar establishments, temporary and semi-permanent art installations, or onsite street activations, we're excited that there's going to be more support for those as well. And it was really heartening to read that there was thoughtful analysis of the existing retail market and what the addition or subtraction of retail can mean for our existing retail base. Considering community character and street life and the impact it has on the feeling of visitors, shoppers, and residents downtown is critical, and I feel like this plan has covered a lot of that. Thoughtfully discerning how re-envisioned mid-block traffic crossings can make it safer and more convenient to shop downtown is very important, or how replacing extended permanent walls, like we've seen with some of our older, outdated shopper centers with more porous passageways, is a wonderful thing to see, and I was pleased to see that the recent plans for the district Galleria did think about that, especially accessibility from all different parts of the street, but also open space and nodes where there can be events and opportunities for neighbors to meet one another. And then, of course, like you, I was very, very pleased to see someone else stand up in the audience tonight and speak to intergenerational importance in this plan, so that's a personal passion of mine. Just, again, as mentioned, the bid will continue to be a very loyal partner to help me disseminate information and to help further this cause, so thank you again for everything you've done, and we've been pleased to be part of the process so far.
All right, and next we have Jackson Bott.
Hi, my name is Jackson Bott, I'm a proud White Plains High School student. White Plains has always cared about youth, whether it be through youth education, youth safety, or youth recreation, but as the plan stated, we must prepare for change, as change has occurred, if you haven't heard, about the Galleria. The Galleria has always served for a safe place for many youth throughout the history of White Plains, and I have never once thought it could ever turn to where it is now, but we, we must prepare. And it is nice to see that the committee, along with multiple people throughout White Plains, care so much about youth safety and youth recreation, that they come up with multiple ideas to help this cause. And it's a hard journey, because sometimes youth doesn't even know what youth wants, and it is just nice to know that there's a committee and a whole city behind youth that supports it, helps it, and grows it. So thank you for all your thought, and that's all.
Hi, my name is Tanya, and I'm sort of a White Plains newbie, I got here in 2019, and I'm proud to be here. Just learned about the committee recently, and I appreciate your work. I just, I live here downtown, and I'm noticing a decline in city center, I don't know if you guys have plans for that, because I'm new and I haven't been at all the meetings, and the building right across the street, the elevator, the escalators are consistently broken, there's another, another area where their escalators that never work, so that's a space that can be utilized for something else if they're not going to work. I wish they would fix them, it actually is a safe place, and I, I was followed, and those escalators, all of it was shut down, it was very late at night, and I thought about if those escalators were working and the, it wasn't blocked, that would have been a safe place to get out of the garage. The, it's consistently dirty, the S, the elevators are dirty, and I believe that when you don't take care of something, you attract other people that don't take care of things. It's also a great place to have signage about how much we love White Plains, and some rules and maybe even signs for fines, you know, so just some things to think about. You're already doing a great job, so just add that to it.
Any other folks at this time who have a comment they'd like to add? Thank you. If you could state your name, please.
Certainly. Mark LeLu, 125 Waldo. First off, I want to thank the committee for all the work they've done on, on this presentation going forward. I just want to make a few comments. Going forward for our city, I live in a neighborhood that's not downtown, and I just want to see our connection be addressed, that all areas of White Plains participate in whatever our future is. I know my neighborhood has some issues, hopefully they get addressed. And going forward, previous speaker Ben, he commented on, on, on the workforce, whatever is concessions that developers get, I would love to see that White Plains, especially its people, I'm a union worker, and hopefully that gets addressed in- its people, I'm a union worker, and hopefully that gets addressed in community benefits, like if something's given to the developers or whoever wants to come here, please let it benefit all of us. The youth have been up there asking for space. Jobs for union members would be great. We're building big projects here, no reason why it can't be union labor. And going forward, I want to see that all members of White Plains are involved in the future. Like Ben commented, some of the presentation for the Galleria was done without your input or my input, and we're all White Plains residents, so I'd like to see us be a part of that. And overall, I leave it in your hands. You guys are tasked with coming up with a great plan for us, and just going forward, keep up the good work. Thank you.[771.38][771.38][applause]
My name's Chuck Letterman, down by Rosedale for sixty years now. I think there's one thing that's been left out of the comprehensive planning. That plan in 1962, which preceded the greatest growth here in White Plains like all time, many of the houses that we all live in were built in that era. It didn't just happen in 1962, it coincided with all of the Eisenhower schools that were built at the time. That plan centered around neighborhoods and neighborhood schools. Now, I don't think it's a coincidence that, you know, your one White Plains, you start off pointing out that there's twenty-eight neighborhoods, and then you end up scrubbing out all of those lines and just have the outline of the city. That's very much the same strategy that the school district followed when they decided to sell off a couple of our neighborhood schools, because they didn't need the space, which we all know was wrong. And the result of that was to break up our neighborhood's cohesiveness. Parents don't get to walk, kids don't walk to the same school, they don't get to talk to each other, they don't know what's going on in their neighborhood, they don't know what's going on in town. So, I think that you can't leave the schools out of comprehensive planning. It's not very comprehensive if you're not going to tell the schools where to knock down one, or sell one off, or build another one. It's got to be part of it, because that would have answered all these kids' problems. Those were all open space. Now, we have no green space, because all those school fields were where we played baseball, frisbee. That was a safe place for the kids to go sledding, or to hang out at night, play basketball. They don't exist anymore. They got sold off because some short-sighted politicians who got elected in the school board at that time decided, we don't need it, we'll build more in a couple of years. So, I hope, I know it's probably too late in your process, but it's not very comprehensive if you're not considering the school district and the open space that that's supposed to provide to all of us. Thank you.[913.73][913.73][applause]
I'm not from White Plains, but I'm from the College of Manhattanville, which is next door, and I feel that there's not a whole lot of pedestrian safety in White Plains itself. There's a lot of one-way streets, and there's a lot of very wide streets, a lot of very wide lanes, there's a lot of speeding, there's anarchy out there. And when you go to White Plains, all you see is cars, there's too many cars in the city, and they need some taming, so, you know, they can come in here, but we got to tame them, so. And when you're taming automobile traffic, that means you got to slow them down, you got to have more narrow streets, you got to have more pedestrian-friendly streets, and denser grid, again, grid is most efficient. Look at Manhattan, you see very dense grid of streets, it's very efficient, it moves a lot of traffic, not quickly, but it does, and therefore it's also very pedestrian-friendly. So, I heard a lot of people talking about the Galleria tonight, and again, the Galleria is a huge ten-acre parcel. Instead of selling off all that land from the city, it is important that the city reimplants all the streets that were ripped out in the 1960s. A lot of streets were torn out in the 60s. The city literally ripped itself apart in the 60s and 70s. Into the 80s, they kept on tearing out streets, widening streets, creating these large, high-speed thoroughfares. And so now we're left with all these kind of awkward, one-way streets that require people to drive around Robin Hood's Barn to get somewhere. And we have so much parking in the city, it's insane. However, the parking is not on the street, it is in garages and all these other places, and parking maximums, I think, is something that should be adopted. And with, and I really hope you guys are considering narrower streets, more on-street parking, and trying to get rid of some of the very wide straws we have in the city that encourage speeding, that make it very dangerous for pedestrians, bike lists, and other non-users that aren't driving massive Suburbans. So, and therefore I feel that you guys really do need to look at finding the money to create two-way streets. And I'll send you guys, and I have a whole presentation of all maps of how to redo the traffic patterns downtown in order to make traffic flow better, as well as make it safer for pedestrians. My last comment before I go about the Galleria, again, people have been talking about it, they're very concerned about it, and again, all those streets that were torn out to build the Galleria, buy the land back. Seventy-five, seventy-foot right-of-way, maybe sixty-five-foot right-of-way, bisect the two lots into four lots. You'll have two new public streets. And the plan is to, right now we have four traffic lanes that run between Hamilton Avenue and East Post Road. If we can take those four traffic lanes, split them up into four smaller streets, make those four smaller streets cross north-south White Plains, you will have narrower streets, and they will be closer together instead of just having several just massive streets. And therefore, you will have better flow of traffic in downtown, and you won't have the anarchy we have today in White Plains, and I feel that you guys really do need to consider making it more narrow streets and bidirectional streets, especially downtown. And by bisecting the Galleria lot into smaller parcels individually will help, again, instead of just one massive building or one massive development, trying to break it up into smaller developments brings the city back down to the human scale. That's really what you guys really need to be focused on as well. Thank you very much.[1173.65][1173.65][applause]
Good afternoon, good evening. My name's Carl Albanese. I've been a resident here for probably over thirty years, raised two of my children here, they're grown now. I wasn't going to speak, but, you know, it was such an inspiration here tonight, especially by the youth, that I decided that I want to talk about some of the elements that many people spoke about here before. Not easy to do what you're doing. We've been involved in the comprehensive plan in 97. Very different from what I'm seeing now, even though I've been MIA for a very long time, but the comprehensive plan is not completely different. We all know that. You're still working on it, it's a work in progress. But what I'm hearing, you know, you had Charlie Letterman up here, I think we're probably two of the residents here, there may be more, that have been here for over thirty years. And Charlie spoke about how we will want communities, how we all got involved. I don't see that happening here in the comprehensive plan, and addressing and bringing us back together. That's one thing I see. The youth program, they all said it, I couldn't say it any clearer, you really have to consider the youth, not just now, but where are we going in the future? What's the future going to look like for the youth here if we're not providing for them now and planning for them now? That's a very important issue. Activities for the youth, places for them to go. No offense, I engage developers, I know most of the developers, they did an incredible job here. They really have done an incredible job when they put up city center. The complexity of doing that, that offered space to people here in the city, places to go, places to do. We need to think about that for the future for our children. The one thing I really don't see at all, and I do an incredible amount of veterans' work in Westchester County and in Washington, you haven't even considered the possibility of offering senior services for veterans and a place for them to go. Doesn't exist, really never existed. We talk about veterans, we go to parades, we wave our flags for them, but what are we doing for them? What are we really doing for them? We have VA hospitals we all go to, they go there, but there's nothing here for our Westchester local veterans, where they can really come together, socialize. I'm not talking about therapy and medical care. Veterans love to engage with community, the Mentor Programs for Veterans for Youth, you talk about wanting to have programs for youth, mentor with veterans. There's nothing more significant, more impressive, more inspirational than that relationship between a veteran who served his country and giving back to our communities. So, I want to close with, I appreciate everything you're doing. You need to do more before you really lock this all in. You need to engage our communities, you need to reach out to our communities and bring us all back together, you know, for the future. The planning is the process. How are we going to do that? How are we going to make it navigated? That's all I'm saying. So, I know you got a lot of work, not easy to do, you're going to hear people, and I'm sure you did hear them already, you know, not kind, I've been on that side a couple of times, but thank you for everything you are doing.[1384.38][1384.38][applause]
My name's Phil McGovern, lifetime resident, in and out, many, many years old. Large family, large kid, a lot of kids, all that, White Plains schools, et cetera. One thing I do want to address here is, I think, number one, you all need to be commended, and the Commissioner Gomez, and the council, because this is really an impressive document. It's imperfect, of course, like all of us, but it's an impressive document, and we thank you for your incredible amount of dedication, really, is what it is. I kind of wanted to reference what Chuck was saying, Letterman. The idea was in the 60s, early 60s, White Plains, actually, Westchester, we actually helped elect a Democratic president, and we were first in line for urban renewal funds. And we had one of the earliest Title I fund systems in White Plains, Greenberg, right here. And the idea was that at the time, and this really addresses a thread that goes through this entire document, at the time, it was sort of, you know, ten years later, we saw it as urban removal, people removal, and it was a kind of people removal. And it was the poor people, the non, you know, black, et cetera populations that were removed. That's what they did, you know, they wanted to improve it, they wanted to build stores, and all the buildings that were built were Class A, Type I buildings, single-use buildings, single-tenant buildings. But the idea is, what you guys have done is brought this up to 2023. And Chuck mentioned the schools. Carol Johnson was a demiurge when it came to the reality of education, and the fact is that we lived in segregated worlds, and it began in the schools. One of the first proponents of balancing schools in terms of our black population, in terms of our, you know, at the time it was growing Puerto Ricans population because of the 50s, but the idea was, they addressed it, and they addressed it, you know, in so many ways, from the mid-50s right straight through to the most recent balancing program. And our school system is impressive because of its balance. The idea is, yeah, well, they were neighborhoods, because neighborhoods equated to segregation. Now, you guys, White Plains, one of the wonderful parts about White Plains is its openness and its interaction in terms of race, in terms of comfort levels, et cetera. But the idea was, you could come in here in the 70s, and you could not, if you were black, you could not buy a house in the Highlands, or in some of those neighborhoods that everyone, you know, remembers as the halcyon days of, you know, our youth, because that was the reality. But this document, throughout every single piece of it, it's diversity. It's interacting with the community as we've changed, and there's the difference. You're making, and again, I agree in terms of the Galleria, it's a problem, but the idea is, this is the kind of thing, this is why we've changed, this is the future, this is the beauty of this type of document, as imperfect as it is, because White Plains is like the nation. We've changed, and we're not just serving one group or two groups or three groups, we're trying to serve the entire community, and the community that's become so much more diverse, so much, you know, just, it's a wonder to live in White Plains, and it's really beautiful. And so, you know, I think I just wanted to add that our schools are still the best, you know, our system is, you know, White Plains is a really, really great place to live. And the idea is, I think, that you're continuing the forward-looking, the forward-looking consciousness that's always been part of White Plains, and principally in the schools. They were thinking about stuff that we're still thinking about in the 50s, and it was, you know, it's one of the beauties of White Plains, and so I thank you for that continuation of our growth and well-being. Thank you.[1677.42][1677.42][applause]
Nobody else? Mr. Sanchez, Mike, I'm going to put you on the spot in the voice call uniform. I'm going to Eagle Scout, so I can do that. We'll end the meeting. No, I do want to thank everybody for attending. Again, this was very informative, I've heard a lot of great comments, I know obviously the Conference of Plan Committee was listening, taking notes, as we all are. Again, we have a website, again, and that email address, onwp@whiteplainsny.gov, to get any comments back to us. We're always available at the planning department. Do we have more comments?
Yeah, just one general comment, for the future, as you come to...
Good evening, Kelly Higgs, Old Manic Road in White Plains. Just for the future, is it possible to find a space for the public to participate and share comments that doesn't require us to pay for parking? This is my, you know, my pet peeve. And God forbid, if you run over, the next thing you get is a $25 ticket. So, you're coming here, you're volunteering your time, what you thought would, you know, cover $2, and it ends up, you know, close to $30, because you get a ticket, because you go over your time. So, I'm just suggesting that, please find a space where we don't have to pay to park. It's just, you know.
That's a good, I hope that's not what you... All right, thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody. We'll be it. Thanks.[1783.63][1783.63][applause][1784.63][1784.63][music][1785.63]